Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. Father, we pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make our city great. Bless the children in our city, protect them and keep them safe from harm. Bless this city council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people and let all we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yay, great.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru? Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Win?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. It's good to have you here. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process which we will follow this evening is the first thing we're going to do is take up the two public hearings that are on the docket. Then we'll take up the one consent agenda item, consent agenda item, and then we'll move to the regular agenda. We have 23 or 24, 20 items and something that we will add on to that docket. That's one regular agenda items, and we'll vote on those matters in just the way they are numbered on a printed docket at the conclusion of the formal agenda. If any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. In order to have your name called, though, you must have signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. Before we do start, though, we do have one really horrific ceremonial matter. We have some students here from Chesterfield Academy's fifth-grade basketball drill team. Is that right? Along with the principal, Sandy Witcher. And would you, would, Sandy Witcher, would you like to come forward? And we appreciate you coming down tonight. We understand that you made a very special appearance recently, that you were asked to appear at a basketball, at a professional basketball game in the NBA.
That's true.
Would you like to talk? Could you tell us?
Sure, sure. My pleasure. Good evening to you all, and thank you for honoring the work of our students and staff with this recognition. It is my pleasure to introduce some members, this is not everybody, but these are some members of the fifth-grade basketball drill team from Chesterfield Academy. Under the direction of Mrs. Courtney Jungva, who is our health and physical education teacher extraordinaire, four different fifth-grade classes practiced as units, and then the four classes came together and practiced as an entire grade level until 82 students were able to execute this performance as a single team. Teamwork is the most important aspect of the drill team experience this year because we believe that there is more to life for our eight, nine, and 10-year-olds than SOL testing. We believe that teamwork makes the dream work, and in addition to academics, our children are learning life skills that will help them achieve their dreams. Ms. Jungva took this show on the road. The drill team has performed at the Lady Monarchs basketball game during the ODU and Norfolk Public Schools Education Day. They also performed at halftime for Norview High School and Booker T. Washington High School during their men's basketball season. And our Cheetahs have garnered so much attention from coverage by Wavy TV 10 and YouTube videos that they were invited to perform at the NBA pregame show for the Washington Wizards on April the 9th. So traveling to DC was half the fun. With an outpouring of school and community support, we had many people to thank for providing our students this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, including our very own Mayor Frame for his donation. During our recent luncheon to thank those who have volunteered and supported our school throughout the year, we heard about the DC experience from one of our fifth graders, Ms. Nakaya Sharp, and she has agreed to share her thoughts with you this evening.
Great.
This year, the fifth graders went to Washington DC to perform at the Washington Wizards basketball game. First, everybody came to Chesterfield to get on the bus so we could drive to Washington DC. That felt like the longest bus ride of my life, but in just a couple hours, we finally arrived at Washington DC. We ate our food and we started to tour Washington DC. I still remember how the cherry blossoms looked. When we finished touring it, it was time to go to Washington DC, to Washington Wizards game. Everybody was nervous and decided to perform. After we performed, everybody felt better and ate some food. After, after some hours, it was time to leave Washington DC. Everybody was a little, a little upset, but we climbed on the bus and we came back to Norfolk via. In summary, I am thankful for every teacher, donator, and volunteer that made the trip possible.
Great. Thank you. Good job. Of course, the current fourth graders are looking forward to their turn next year, and the Wizards are already considering us for a halftime performance in 2015. So Ms. Jungva has definitely begun a legacy at Chesterfield in promoting Norfolk Public Schools as the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. So we thank you for having us here as your guests this evening.
Would you ask all the students to stand, please?
Yes, please do.
If anyone wants to take pictures?
Angela, did you want to say anything? Just a second. Angela was actually invited.
I do. I really am excited to see all of the young people here from Chesterfield Academy. I learned about your performance from Raytron White, and he asked if we could have the students come and have them acknowledged for their performance in DC. And so I just want to say to every student that I am very, very proud of you. I want to challenge you to dream big. I want to challenge you to stay in school and study hard, and I want you to know that you can do anything that you put your minds to.
Right.
Yep. So thank you for representing our city so well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to say is that how beautiful you made the pledge of allegiance sound. I mean, you really made it sound good.
All right, let's take a picture. Can you get them all, everybody up here? We'll try that. The Cheetahs. Yeah, you got to get.
Did you watch the whole game?
Wizards' loss?
I did. Actually, you could ask the Wizards that a lot.
Everybody's gonna need them.
Yeah.
Get together, actually, if you like.
Squeeze in towards the middle. Can you get them?
Yeah, oh, I can get them.
I see somebody hiding.
Okay.
All right. Ready? Smile. Cheese, one more cheese. Cheetahs. Yay, good job.
Great.
Good job, guys.
Get them all. All right, thank you all. Thank you all.
You need to go home now.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We'll see you.
You certainly can, if you want to. You stay and I'll go.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
That's what they keep telling me.
I know, right? You're welcome. Thank you.
Breck, will you give me that list? Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
All right, public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day under state law to receive nominations for the appointment of three school board members.
All right, this is that point in the year that, as required by the Commonwealth law, we have to have a public hearing to consider anyone who wants to be on our school board. Their name has to be mentioned tonight at this meeting. In order to actually be considered as a nominee, we have to have an open and public process for the selection of school board members, and so the nominations have to be made in public. I have a list of folks who have signed up to speak on public hearing one. All I do is ask, please, when I call your name, if you'll come forward and give us your full name and your present home address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes or shorter if all you're doing is coming to place the name and nomination. So Melinda, Melendez Byrd? Yes, sir. Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melendez Byrd. My address is 1508 Norway Court. And I would like to formally nominate Dr. Leon Rousen as a school board member of Norfolk Public Schools. I have known Dr. Rousen for over 10 years as both as a colleague and a researcher on urban education issues and diversity at Norfolk State University. I also currently have three children attending Norfolk Public Schools, so I want the best for the system. As you review Dr. Rousen's packet, it is clear he has committed himself to public education and teacher preparation, but I'm here to suggest that his career experience alone are not only the reason to consider him as a Norfolk school board member. Dr. Rousen cares about our city and is committed to the just quality education, just not to a quality education, but a quality life here at Norfolk. He recognizes the role in one of collaboration and is a visionary leader able to establish and assist in obtaining to set goals. He is also very aware of the needs of our city and works extremely well with others, as he is currently a well-respected professor at Norfolk State University in the School of Education. He is humble yet thorough, one who listens yet leads. It is without reservation that I nominate Dr. Leon Rousen as a Norfolk school board member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rodney Jordan?
Good evening. Rodney Jordan, 2506 Myrtle Avenue. I have the pleasure to currently serve on the Norfolk School Board and wanted to come before you and ask that I be reconsidered for another appointment coming up for this, for this next term. So it's been my pleasure to serve on behalf of the citizens in this capacity. Very much would like to continue to do so. As you may know, I have the opportunity to serve as the vice chair for the tidewater region for Virginia School Board Association, currently working as the co-chair of a statewide task force on schools in challenging environments. So it's a lot of work to be done, and just like for you to reconsider me for another appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Lana Presley? Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'd like to nominate, oh, I got to give my name and address. Lana Mae Presley. I live at 2833 Villa Circle, Norfolk 23504. I'm here tonight to nominate myself as a member of the City of Norfolk School Board. I proudly hold a degree in sociology from Norfolk State University. I hold a master's of arts from Norfolk State University as well in urban affairs. Serving the City of Norfolk as a longtime civic and community advocate for community development and improvement, I believe I can use my skills, my natural ability, and the initiative that I have to improve the quality of our school board system, thus improving the quality of life for all citizens, especially our children and youth. It is imperative that we provide every educational and vocational opportunity for our future generation and for our future leaders in the City of Norfolk. My purpose this evening is to ask you if you will allow me to share in the process of quality education as a Norfolk school board member. That brings to the table my education, my career experience, and my perspective in the decision-making process of our school system. Respectfully, I request your review of my credentials, and I've sent those credentials via the email system. I hope you have them. If not, I will forward them to you, and I respectfully ask your consideration to serve you as a member of the Norfolk City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Sheila Jones?
Good evening. How y'all doing? My name is Sheila Jones, and I live at 2501 Kenan Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. And I'm here tonight to nominate Mr. Glenn Jones for Norfolk's school board.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Casey Little?
Hello, my name is Casey Little. I live at 716 Dudley Avenue, and I'm here to nominate Glenn Jones for the school board.
Thank you. Chiquinha Knight?
Hello, my name is Chiquinha Knight. I live at 2811 Ballantyne Boulevard, and I'm here tonight to nominate Mr. Glenn Jones for Norfolk Public School School Board.
Great. Thank you for coming down this evening. Okay, that concludes the list of people who have signed up to make nominations for the school board. Wait a minute, Dan Montague. I'm sorry, Dan. Let's skip right by. Excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the City of Norfolk. I nominate myself for the simple reason is I want an elected school board. We currently own half of the fed schools in the state, unaccredited schools in the state. And the thing about it is, I told you guys decades ago that the school system was in trouble, but as usual, nobody pays any attention. And the thing about it is, we need a drastic change in the school system in this city, and we need an elected school board to do it. Everybody else around here that's got a real good school system has an elected school board. We don't have one, and we have the worst school system in the area. Need I say more? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to speak, to make nominations. We have a list of other folks who have notified the clerk of their interest in serving on the school board or who have maybe notified other members of the city council, so their names have to be spoken in order to be considered. Of course, of the three incumbents, we've heard from Mr. Jordan. Dr. Nicole Gabriel has also indicated her willingness to be reappointed, as has Edward Haywood. Those are the three incumbents on the school board. We've also heard from Francisco Coronel, Vicky Hawkins Black, Linda Erwin Davides?
Davides.
Davides, Ricky Ross. We've also heard from Joe Dillard, Carl Massenberg, Abdul Aswad, Adrian Latta. Is, is, is that the list? Did I miss anybody on that list that gives us two? They got the list. Are there any other names for any members of the council who want to be any?
I'd like to place the name of Cheryl Bunch in the nomination.
Cheryl?
Yeah, C-H-E-R-Y-L.
Bunch.
B-U-N-C-H.
Okay. Anyone else?
I had a question.
Yes.
And I did want to say I resent what you said, Mr. Montague. We do not have the worst school system in the area. We may have our issues, but it's not the worst school system. Have we worked out the issue with the three-year terms on this? Will they all, the new appointments be for three years? Or were they supposed to be staggered? I wasn't sure if, with the new law.
I'm not 100% certain, but I believe, and I can get back to you very quickly on this, that these new nominees will all be three years.
Okay, so it is effective. I remember there was conversation about staggering when you introduced something like this, but if the law says three years, then?
It's a good question. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
But I believe that, you know that legislation passed, and I believe it's effective July the 1st, which are these nominations are for, so I think that is the case, and I will get that confirmation to you.
Okay, that is, unless I hear any other names, then we will close the nominations, and I will close the, the motion is to close the public hearing, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day on the application of DSF Development LLC for a change of zoning from conditional C2 and R6 to conditional R8 on properties located at 453 through 467 Brockwell Avenue and 446 through 468 Frizzell Avenue. By 5-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Feynman is here to answer questions if there are any. Call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to rezonate properties located at 453 to 467 Brockwell Avenue and 446 to 464 Frizzell Avenue from conditional C2 and R6 to conditional R8. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
C1, please.
Approve C1, Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
C1, please.
Approve C1, Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R1?
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a gas station, sales-only, known as Walmart, on property located at 7530 Cloudwater Drive. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Tom Klein is here to answer questions if we have any. Okay, call, yes.
Just have a quick statement to make. I think this is great, the investment that is going to be made over in the Southern Shopping Center area. I just have one request. We need to do something about the amount of trash that is, the litter that is in that area. And I don't know if anybody goes that way often, but the entranceway to the industrial park, if you look just along the fence and in the area, there's a lot of plastic bags. There's a lot of, and maybe Walmart will work with us in being a really good partner in the environment and helping us keep that area clean. But it desperately needs some assistance.
All right. Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R2 and 2A.
R2 is an ordinance granting a special exception to Sam's East Inc., authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Sam's Club on property located at 741 East Little Creek Road. And for both of these, Mr. President, planning commission recommends approval by 6-0 vote.
Mr. Klein is still here to answer questions if we have any. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R3? An ordinance granting a special exception to La Grande Restaurant Company LLC, authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as La Grande on property located at 4515 Colley Avenue. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R4?
An ordinance granting a special exception to Noodle Bar Inc., authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Noodle Bar on property located at 411 Granby Street, Suite B. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Michael Mohammed?
Good evening, Councilman. Michael Mohammed, 801 East 26th Street, Norfolk 23504. Mr. Mayor, good to see you. Guess Tag you're it since you played hide-and-go-seat for five months. But I'm definitely in favor of this establishment because it's a job creator for our city. And one of the things that I'm hoping is that with alcohol coming to this establishment, that patrons will be able to get home safely. And if they consume too much and drive, then we have a police department to handle that. But while they're handling it, I'm hoping that our police department can handle it with discretion and none of our citizens end up dead, as we've seen over the last week. We've had several of the citizens of Norfolk to end up dead at the hands of our police department. So from that perspective, I would really ask the council's engagement of the community to address these issues as they are growing. Mental health and mental health issues are increasing. When you have traumatic experiences like what the family of David Latham witnessed on last Friday, that trauma can carry over into mental illness such as post-traumatic stress, adding to the rolls of mental health cases here in our city. And the fear on the part of citizens, I heard a mother, the mother of David Latham, say she would never dial 911 again for any reason. And it's a frightening thought that good, hard-working citizens can't use the services of our police department for what they're for, for fear. We have mental health cases in the city, people saying, who suffer with mental health issues, they're afraid to call the police. And so with that being the case, we need an engagement process, not to talk in closed session or to rush in with an ill-prepared press conference and hide behind a public spokesperson for the city. We need to hear from the manager. We need to hear from the director of the Community Services Board. We need to hear from the police chief in an open and honest discussion about how we can deal with these issues. I emailed members of council this evening photos of the home of the Lathams when they returned from being detained at Norfolk Police Operations Center against their will, and when they returned home and found the clothing of their loved one who had been killed by the police, only later for the police to return to the crime scene to recover evidence, totally destroying the chain of evidence and also contaminating any potential good information that could come from that evidence. We really need to look at our police department. I know my time is up. I want to make one last point. Last week at Officer Jones's funeral, and while I'm here, I want to extend my condolences to our city on the loss of Officer Jones. At his funeral, his partner spoke about his ability to convince their commanding officer to let rookie officers ride together. And I'm questioning if that, if he had to convince a commander to do that, why would the chief say that's normal practice? Having untrained officers transporting, or traveling, I should say, together in the city and answering emergency calls is not good because it results in what we've seen over this last week, and that is the death of good citizens of the City of Norfolk. Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R5, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment with no alcoholic beverages, known as Arabian Nights Hookah Lounge,
George, is it just hookah or do they actually sell food? I know, no alcohol, but...
To the best of my knowledge, if they sell food, it would be just packaged items or something like that. To my knowledge, they are not in the business of repairing food.
Okay. Strange places. I know.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R6.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Aston Shelton Enterprises LLC, authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment named Cure Coffee House and Brasserie on property located at 503 Bodataut Court. By 6-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. And Gene Aston, Mr. Aston? Are you here? That's okay. Here to answer any questions if anyone hasn't. Thank you. Call the roll, please. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R7.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Corner Spot Inc., authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment not yet named on property located at 2406 Colonial Avenue, Unit 8. By 6-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. John Porter's here to answer questions if anyone hasn't. Great, okay. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame? Aye. What's that? John, congratulations. Good luck with this one as well.
We're excited about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. An ordinance accepting $27,000 from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $27,000 for the construction of the Loblet Avenue canoe kayak launch and fishing dock. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R9.
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of $8,360 to the city from the Hampton Roads Community Foundation and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds to support library services and programs with a preference for the purchase of additional books, reading, or educational materials at the Pretlo Anchor Branch Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R10.
An ordinance accepting $37,104 from the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Fund E-Rate Grant Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $37,104 for telecommunications and technology services for Norfolk Public Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R11.
An ordinance accepting $7,465.27 from the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Fund E-Rate Grant Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of said amount for telecommunications and technology services for Norfolk Public Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R12.
An ordinance accepting a 100 Resilient Cities Initiative Grant Award of not to exceed $200,000 for each of two years for total grant funding not to exceed $400,000 from Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors, Inc., to assist the city in building its capacity to maintain and recover critical functions despite natural and man-made shocks and stresses, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds for the 100 Resilient Cities Initiative Grant purposes. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.